I'm going to call this meeting to order at seven oh three P M. I'm trying to. Move the agenda as quickly as possible to get people out of here before it starts smelling terribly. Julie is not here. Well, I can't. The problem is you can't. This isn't soon, so you can't communicate in. So I'll call the order. Joe. John.
There.
I'm here. Stephanie, Angela. Angela. Okay. Alex. Justin. Jen. Jane. Jane's not here. She's maybe by. There she is. Okay. Julie is not here. Choose Julie up there. There's Julie. There's Julie. Pete. Pete.
President.
Mary. Okay, we have ten people present in person, two present electronically. At this point, I'll ask if there's any public comment on any agenda items. Public comment on agenda items going once, twice. I see no public comment on agenda items. We'll move on to consent agenda. On that agenda, our Board of Education minutes from February sixth, twenty twenty three. Does anyone wish to take those off? Hearing no one knows will remain on the consent agenda and they would be adopted by by consent. Board chairs report. I'm going to shelve it tonight because I want to get people out of here before it gets smelling. So no board chairs report.
All right, I'm also going to keep it brief tonight. So superintendent's report under personnel. We have an appointment of Robin Frome as a middle school drama director. That's a one year position at Chappaq Valley School. We have. The resignation of Nancy Knapp, a beloved secretary at S V S effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty three, so we wish her the best. In her future endeavors. Notification for the board. We have a upcoming field trip to the Bronx Zoo for our sixth graders. That'll take place in June. And it's great to be able to be back out in New York and visiting sites during COVID. Many sites. It didn't allow folks in or didn't allow you in if you didn't have good vaccination. So many times we kind of scrapped those things in the past. Nice feeling like we're getting back to normal. I also had a chance recently to meet with a tennis coach for the spring, Mr. Ray, and we're excited to bring him on board in the future. To inject some enthusiasm in our tennis program. And I've had a wonderful opportunity to get out and spend some time in the schools. Most recently, I was at. Chappaq Valley School meeting with middle and high schoolers to learn about their school experiences and. It's a great opportunity. I learned a lot. We have really bright and articulate students who are able to. They can really be open and honest about ways that we continue to do all the great things we're doing here in school and other ways to continue to enhance that. So. It's been a wonderful couple of weeks since the last time that we've held them together, but with that on the report.
Okay, very good. John, you have a question to support?
I'm not going to try to explain the audit. I think Nicole is going to cover that in detail.
Actually, John, we're gonna, we're gonna move that audit off of our agenda to the F and O committee. You can go to F and O.
All right, that's fine.
And we're not going to undertake that. Okay.
Okay, then I wanted to talk about. Sources of revenue for the district, especially since it helps to offset. The overall financial burdens to the town. And a lot of this Dr. Goslin presented to us, but I'll, I'll cover it just for the public. Sources of revenue for the district. Demand for tuition into region twelve remains high as evidenced by the following. Projected tuition in applications for twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year are to date. Booth, six students. Burnham, fifteen students. Washington Primary, four students. And Chappaq Middle High School, forty students. It's pretty good. So that's a total like totals between sixty five and seventy students from out of district. That's not ag. At our last F and O, we discussed the possibility of increasing tuition rates. Which is something this board might consider if we continue to have an increase in out of district enrollment. Currently, tuition in rates are elementary school, five thousand, middle school, six thousand, high school, eight thousand. Sherman's tuition contract for twenty three, twenty four is going to be fourteen thousand, eight hundred and five dollars per student. Before any additional educational services. They also pay for their own busing because of the ag component. Ag tuition and grant revenue for twenty three, twenty four school year is projected to be almost one million, four hundred and twenty thousand. With an out of district population of approximately one hundred and twenty. And in district is approaching sixty. Um, so what does that mean? It means that currently the state kicks in fifty two hundred and the sending towns are just under seven thousand. There is a bill, however, and it's been floated a few times in the past. But in this particular legislative session. Proposed bill number five zero zero three, an act concerning educational funding in Connecticut. Basically, if it's passed, it would transfer the ag student tuition's responsibility from the sending towns to the state. There are formulas that are being considered that will level funding for interdistrict magnet, state charter, regional agricultural science and technology education schools and centers. Currently, the state funding for charter is thousands higher than the aggregate. Of state grant dollars in tuition paid by the sending towns for ag. This bill's passage would definitely allow the sending towns to supply more students. This is a huge bill covering many aspects of funding for pre K through community and technical college. It's, yeah, you can go to the state website and check out five zero zero three. It's, it's co, the bill is actually co-introduced by Matt Ritter, Speaker of the House. And he actually is our bond attorney as well. So. And our, and our, and our very own state Senator Eric Bertel sits on the education committee. He is also actively involved in this proposal. Perhaps we could invite Senator Bertel to explain the intricacies of this bill in the future. That's about it.
Yeah, I'd just like to. I just like, can you hear me? I'd just like to raise the issue of our tuition, our tuition costs, what we're charging for tuition.
Pete, Pete, this is not on the agenda.
It's not. You don't want to discuss.
I know. I don't want to add unless, unless we have, I'm trying to keep the agenda from getting longer.
Okay.
To get people out of here before it starts to snow and everything. All right. I mean, I, I think that there's a time for that, but tonight may not be it because I don't know that we have anyone that's ready to address it.
Okay.
But if you have questions and you've got a question about John's report, that's.
No, I don't. I have a question about the numbers, but we can bring it up in another meeting.
Yeah, okay, good. Yeah, I think we should do that. I'm just trying to avoid.
My issue is very simple. The numbers don't seem to change year after year after year, and the question is, we have an inflationary environment. I want to discuss. How. Inflation reflects on what we're charging for tuition.
Well, we can have that discussion.
Yeah, and we don't have to have it tonight. I'm looking to have it tonight.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll put that on the list of items for future meeting. Okay. Committee reports, curriculum and educational programming, Justin.
So we just had our meeting and let's see. Couple of things we talked about. Dr. Goslin gave us an update on the Spanish or world language program. That we would like to see come back in the elementary schools. Nothing's really, you know, set in stone right now, so kind of brainstormed. Or he gave us a, an overview of what it may look like and some of the steps that we may have to take in order to. Make this program be successful in the future. We were also joined by principals Emily Judd and Emily Rue, who helped kind of see without, helped us see what. That would look like in the elementary schools. Dr. DeBrito also gave us an update on reading in our schools as it pertains to the state's new legislation. On the science of reading and, you know, without getting into it too much, based on what was presented to us, it seems like we're in, we're in fairly good shape with. Our alignment with.
Yeah, I mean, I think it is. I mean, we're in alignment, but we're always expanding. We're not our option. We did not go with the way, but we put down the extensions and as we study both our own program, we have to get on with the best decision.
That's not it.
Okay, thank you very much. Joe, advance.
Nothing new to report.
Alex, F and O.
Nothing really to report except on operations. Is it going to be some snow shoveling being done in the next twenty four hours?
All right, labor negotiations, there's nothing going on right now. Strategic long range planning. Well, Julie can't talk to us, so. I. We'll, we'll have to put that off for the next time she's able to do this. Unfortunately, it's not a two way communication with this, this current system. But according to this. I do not see an upcoming meeting. Okay. I see no old business. We'll go on to new business. The enrollment projections report. We're going to Dr. Goslin.
Just give me a second.
Well, the one thing I'll say about it is it's certainly the first one of these we've had, but since I've been on the board. That talked about the trend being different.
Yeah.
Yes.
So we did receive a report from Dr. Peter Prowna, who formerly worked for the state doing enrollment projections. Now does this private contract for a number of districts around, around the state. I guess the, and I've shared the, the report with the. Board previously, it's attached to the agenda for tonight, also. Over consumption. The main takeaway is that we are looking to reverse a longstanding trend in the district where we had seen. A period of contraction and declining enrollments. And his projections actually show that we are looking to grow approximately twenty percent over the next ten year period. With the majority of that growth being centered at the Burnham School in the town of Bridgewater. One of the caveats I would just issue is that since we have such small numbers of students. Especially when you disaggregate by town is that we're prone to wild fluctuations and swings with just a few kids. And so. When we look at these trends and projections. I would just suggest we always take the beginning of salt, but I think that is a, overall a positive trend of projection that we see. As we head into the future. So to me, the takeaway qualitatively is that it's a indicator of the hard efforts of. People that came before me, including Maggie Bennett and others to add value to the program. Through the overall curriculum program and also the ag system program to attract folks to the region. It's made out strong. Students in the schools, both inside and outside the region. And I think there's been evidence particularly during the period with the. Pandemic where people did choose to relocate from our towns. And that's a nice thing when I'm in the building to talking to folks. Number of folks who recently moved into town based on schools. And so those are the people I think that are the. True representations day to day of what we see in, in Prowner's report. And I don't know if there's any questions based on, again, I played this and put out there for a while, but I thought it would be. Important just to bring public into conversation and not to know that we are seeing that projected growth overall. It's going into, for us, creating conversations around what do we do to accommodate these growing numbers of students. And also how do we manage that growth in thinking about the sense that we take in from out of the district as well. So. Trying to balance the, that stronger reading. And making sure that we're filling up seats, having good healthy schools. But also balancing the need to add additional staff. What could be a new cost and drag on the overall budget. So trying to kind of hit that sweet spot, get the best of both worlds as we think about the relative.
Okay, I mean, a couple of things that I noted from, from the report is that. In the next few years, over the course of the next few years, we are going to see between the. Current middle school population plus the addition of ag science students graduating classes approaching one hundred and ten. Students, which is quite a bit up. The last time I signed diplomas, I think there were seventy five. So we're, we're going to see a, a very large increase in that, and I think that's all good for us. If you look at the, the elementary school populations, they're going to bounce around a little bit. And Burnham is definitely moving up more than anyone else. And I think. I, I think that this is going to have a, a big effect on this, on this region. I think if we can continue. To see some measured growth here, it's going to be nothing good. And then now we've got to really step up with the high game on our standpoint to make sure that we provide the services and the needs that these. Preaching number of people that are going to be employed and I'm confident we will. Okay. Well. That's what we've been hoping for, that we would get to this point, and here we are. And, and it's not just the increase is not entirely due to ag science. I would point out that, that the projected, the projected increase in. For middle school enrollment. Is going to be back to where it was, back even higher than it was in the two thousand twelve, thirteen. So it's, the, the enrollment within the towns is planned. And the same thing at the middle high school. It's, it's not, I mean, we will, we will be by twenty thirty one, we will have projected to have three hundred and nine. Non-ag science children from the three towns and then another hundred from the sending towns. That brings us up to four hundred and nine projected, whereas we were at three hundred and twenty in two thousand. High school provision. On our school. So we are, we are clearly gaining ground both in, within the three towns and within the center.
I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right table. Table eight. On page seventeen, that's showing the, the ten year projected.
Eight, eighteen.
The table eight enrollment in region twelve by town of residence, and it shows from twenty twelve. Today, which has lasted years and then projected forward, but this is like what.
Yes, I believe that that's what that is. It's, it's the, it's the projected enrollment and then the percentage that each town will have of that projected enrollment.
But in ten years, both Roxbury and Washington will have less students going to do today.
That is correct. Well, that's not entirely true. No.
I want to make sure I'm reading this right or.
No, Roxbury will have more. Washington will have fewer. I mean, Washington will go from forty seven percent to forty percent. And Roxbury will go from twenty eight point eight to twenty nine point two six. Bridgewater will increase the most from twenty.
No, that, that's the percentage of overall. That's our percentage of students per the district. What I'm looking at. Is further to the left where it goes by town, Bridgewater, Roxbury, Washington, town total. If you're looking at the percentages on the far right, that's our distribution. But on the far left, it says like if we go to twenty twenty two, where that kind of like perforated or bothered line is.
Yeah, no, I see, I see what you're saying.
You know what I mean? We're looking at Bridgewater currently has a hundred and forty. At the end of twenty thirty two, they'll have one sixty four that was grown. Roxbury's at one seventy. It'll dip to one fifty eight. Washington's at two eighty. It'll dip to two eighteen. So overall, our town total will go from today, five ninety to five forty in ten years. So am I not clearly, I'm just, I don't know if I'm not.
I'll take a look at that table to talk about in particular. I'm wondering is where he's adding in out of district students.
He's not, this table.
That one's just residents.
This is just residents. So what we're projecting to increase is our out of district enrollment. And that's going to bring us over. Is that?
Well, his summary projects that Burnham would grow from seventy two students in the current school year to eighty seven in ten years to now twenty thirty two. For a twenty one percent gain. And that booth would grow from twenty, from seventy three students to eighty two. In that ten year period for gain twelve percent. So is that not your understanding based on the table?
Yeah, that table for me, so I mean, in the little descriptor above it, it shows that this, it said it is by town of residence. So that does not include. Our, our tuition and students. So when I'm wondering then if this projection is being based on that we are going to continue to grow. Our tuition in base because it looks like overall our in town base is going to do. Like the projector that will lose. Students.
Well.
In our towns.
The, the real interesting thing is the large increase. And yeah, it could very well be that other towns will.
I think what you're seeing there too is also a reflection of. Students who are already in the system before that growth and because they'll, they'll trail through. So wait, because this table here is looking at. The overall pre K to twelve enrollment for the district. And then of all of those kids. How many of those towns? And so. While the school itself will grow in that ten year period, there will be some periods that haven't grown to that point. In the interim time, and so those are still to be reflected in that kind of lagging indicator, I guess you would call it. So the leading indicator to me would be, we will arrive at the individual schools in that year, but there'll also be another indicator along the way of. You know, before we got to that point, we have lower numbers and so this will still be kind of a drag on the phone.
Right, yeah, that's kind of like we're. I mean, because even still in, in ten years, you know, even with the gangs in Bridgewater, they'll have less students than they have today in Roxbury. You know, so it's like there are some gains, but overall we're still, we'll still be. I, I don't, I guess there must be another table that includes the projections of what our tuition and students are going to be, or maybe there's an explanation of why we think. That's going to continue to grow.
And I can be jumped for to Dr. Prowner for clarification on that table in particular. It does seem to.
It seems contradictory to the summary of.
Well, unless there's a nuance, we don't understand it.
Right.
Well, that's something we'll have to have, we'll have.
Thanks, sorry.
No, no, it's an important question. Thank you for. I wanted to get out. Um, okay, anyone else? All right. Well, we need to move on. Do I have a, a motion to accept for a first reading proposed policy forty two nineteen? Reports of suspected abuse or neglect of children or reports of sexual assault of students by school employers. Was there a second? Okay, moving second. Right, okay, moving second. Is there any discussion of this policy? Or the changes that were made? You were all given a, a red line version. Okay, no questions. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye. I see Julie's hand up. And I see Jane's as well. Okay. So please make an angry wave if I've got you wrong. I have you both voting aye. Okay, okay, good. So and those opposed? And those abstaining? Okay, so yeah, this. Accepted for first reading. Do I have a motion to accept proposed policy fifty one twenty six? Improve the completion rates of FAFSA. Do I have motion to accept that for a first reading? Is there a second? Moving second. Any discussion of this policy? This is a brand new policy. And it's because of state initiatives and laws that they want us to help people complete their tasks with it.
I'm trying to ask like that, that same line that's in there that last time, for me, except it's great information so that. We weren't for last time that that was supposed to be there.
Yeah, we actually checked out their attorney and it is supposed to be in there. And it's more of a donation or a gift in kind that people could help assist with that. And so I know it reads kind of funny, but that was the clarification.
I had some concerns about this policy. And. I, I guess it's not so much the policy is, it's just the implication. It says any information contained in a FAFSA held by the board shall not be a public record for purposes of freedom of information. Well, I would hope not. I would hope that somebody would not put their income information and expense information into a report, other parents' information, and then it would become. Subject to being obtained by FOIA. But it does raise the issue, which is that if we are going to assist people in connection with their FAFSA's, I really wish we didn't have to feel it itself. You know, any record that we have here, I just think it's too potentially problematic. I, I don't know what the purpose of this, of this law is, because it's not really the students that need the assistance. It's the parents that need the assistance. They're the ones filling out the forms. Unless something, unless the students are emancipated adults. My experience has been I filled out those forms, not, not the children. And so I don't, I don't quite know how this is going to help, but I suppose it will. Otherwise, they wouldn't be telling us to do it. Yeah, anyway, I just hope we are very, very sensitive about that.
Yeah, I don't believe that we'll keep the actual forms ourselves still locally. I think the requirement for us to be. Let the state know what percentage of students received our assistance and completed the FAFSA. But those go. Yeah, and today they're completed online, so they would instantly go right into the federal government's portal or se- seminal, so. I don't think we would be storing any of that sensitive information.
Well, I would, I would expect to be, we would hope that anyone who requires. Either financial assistance in the form of grants or financial assistance in the form of loans. I mean, we hope that they have the access to to get it. But I don't know what kind of a plan would encourage people to undertake massive amounts of indebtedness. In this process, I think we've seen that that is a federal level, that that's a nightmare for a lot of students. And so I just, I, I don't know whether. Helping them fill out the form is necessarily in the best interest, but that's what state is deciding to do. So we will do it. In any event. Any event. Uh further discussion. All those in favor of accepting for a first reading proposed policy um fifty one twenty six improved completion rate of FAFSA, please signify by saying aye. And or raising your hand. I see two hands up on the screen. All those opposed? All those abstaining. I see no opposition or abstaining, extensions and two downs. Do I have a motion to accept for a first reading proposed policy five one three one point two physical activity, undirected play and student discipline? Okay, second? Moving second, okay, discussion. If I'm not mistaken, the changes, there was, there were some substantive changes. Quite a few, okay. Uh any questions? All right, uh all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or saying aye. All those opposed? I'm seeing, I'm seeing a hand up that looks like it's opposed. Uh who's? Is that Jane or Julie? All right. Julie is saying no. She's voting against it. Jane, how are you voting? Yes or no? Up or down? She's voting in favor. Okay, um. Oh, Julie is going up. I'm sorry, it looked like you were going down. So Ju- Julie is going up. So we have two up votes on the screen. We have, is anyone opposed? Is anyone abstaining? I think it's unanimous. We've accepted this policy. Yeah, I think that's what it is. Uh okay. All right, um do I have a motion to accept for a first reading proposed policy fifty one forty one point two one? Administration of student medications in the schools. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Is there, are there any questions? These, the the changes to this policy look almost exclusively to be grammatical. To use a defined term, the board.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, right, and right. And and it it added in the concept of uh of the continuous glucose monitor.
And then also, it also talked about um not what used to be just Narcan, but I guess it's more now. So that's also included in that. That's also the included changes.
That is right. There is the um there is the Nar- I forgot about the Narcan part. There's a whole section that's added for what they call opioid antagonists for the purpose of emergency versus aid without prior authorization. Um and people have the ability to opt out of that, their children. Yes, I I I spr- scratching my head at that one. Um wh- why you would want to not have your, may- maybe there's some kind of a a a medical reason for it. I don't know, but I don't know enough about those drugs, but I would think most people would wanna have their child's life saved. Uh and not allow them to die of an overdose, but um it's, you know. Some people may have, there may be, I don't know, there may be there religious objections. I have no idea. I don't know why that would be in there, but it's, I believe in the do we need to engage our council on this to ask the question of why that opt-out provision is there, or you know?
Maybe it came from our council.
I mean, maybe there there may be a reason why the opt-out has to be in there, but I just don't.
May have something to do with an allergy or something.
Well, that's, I'm trying to figure out whether there's some medical reason for it. It it just seems, it just seems to defeat the purpose of the administration of the drug, which is to arrest an overdose. Immediately arrest an overdose, what it does. Uh okay, well, um is there, we have a motion, I believe, and this, do we have a motion to accept this for a first reading? Motion, please. Okay, we did that. Do I have a motion in a second? Already? Okay, never mind. Then, we have any questions? Okay, do we have any questions? Questions or comments? All right, well, then we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye or raising your your thumb. Okay, I see one aye vote, I see two aye votes on the screen. All those opposed? All those abstaining. It's unanimous. Um do I have a motion uh to accept for a first reading policy fifty one forty one point twenty five food allergies, glycogen storage disease and or diabetes? Is there a second? Yeah, I can't, I can't, for some reason, I can't find it. Okay, are are there any questions or comments about this policy? All right, well, all those in favor, please signify by raising your thumb or saying aye. All those, oh, let's see, on the screen, do I see two thumbs up? Okay, all those opposed, all those abstaining. This one is also adopted for first reading. Okay. The action item is gonna not be an action item. Uh yes, John.
So it seems like this is deja vu of the board maybe two or three years ago when every meeting consisted of proving policies. Is that gonna continue or?
As a matter of fact, it is because we we just formed tonight a policy committee.
Yeah.
And that policy committee is gonna be reviewing every policy in the book. A lot of them will have little tiny editorial changes, but some of them may have more, they may have some more substantive changes, we're not sure. But these are gonna come back for us and then over a period of time, we will have we have a whole bunch of new policies we obtained from our attorney. We we shelved all the old policies, we don't use them anymore. So we're gonna try to make sure that all of these have in them, the information that we have in them. So they're gonna come back before the board. Yes, we are gonna have a a policy to use them again.
So uh so eventually after shipment revises them, they're gonna be in the website.
They're on the website now.
They're on the website now.
Yeah, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna go through and we're going to make sure that there are no, there's no information that we need to add to them. And that there are no policies that we need to, on areas where we have discretion, that there are no policies we wanna monitor.
Perfect.
Uh so we are gonna have a poll, a policy committee. Anyone that wants to sign on to join that policy committee, you're welcome to join us. But we're gonna start uh with um policies in the one thousand block. Yes.
There was one thing that I wanted to mention with Narcan. Uh portion of that, if we call emergency services to here, they're going to give Nar- they're not going to ask if we had to have permission. Is there a problem with that? That's maybe some of what we should.
I was wondering the same thing, right? Because like, and they're off self, it means that we wanna administer it locally within the district, but that doesn't mean that a first responder is still or if they even are allowed to.
So even if the parents write the to say we don't address that, we just yeah, I don't understand how that works.
So, I mean, if we have a policy that says we allow parents to opt out.
Yeah.
Yeah, then we would honor that. Parents of the class, but if we had a call nine one one, first responders will play by a different set of rules, just like when we interact with police in the schools, there's different standards that school bishops have to follow, then police have to follow. Uh one being reasonable cause versus problem cause. So um we're basically suspicious of the problem cause, so they will would be kind of analogous to that, that, you know, when first responders come, and we could tell them that, yes, mom and dad had opted out, you know, for us. And you might say, too bad, that's a lot of us.
Policy states that we have to have an opt-out option, but that doesn't necessarily say what that that opt-out looks like, right? Like, so I think, I know, just because my parent in the elementary school, there's, you know, a form in power statement that says specifically detailing, is it Tylenol, is it what? Because I think parents might not want to do an all encompassing opt-out, maybe at the older level, and then say, I didn't know Narcan was a part of the opt-out. Like, you know, just, I don't know what that opt-out looks like. Um and how detailed that is specific to drugs and, you know, that can become a really cumbersome list too. Literally everything you can kind of have, but I don't, I don't know what that looks like.
It can be cumbersome, but at the same time, I think modern nursing software makes it kind of easy to sort of, you know, your personal profile, you know, it's not gonna have every single thing, yes or no, it'll just say like, you know, no Narcan or whatever.
So it's not a blanket opt-out, like you specifically go in and say, you know, I just wouldn't want a parent to say like, in general, I don't like to go to Tylenol, but if there's a life-saving something available, I wouldn't have wanted to opt out of that. I don't know.
Well, see, I I I I question whether, I question whether there's any viability of any kind of an opt-out from Narcan. Because first of all, you've gotta make an instant decision, right? You've got a kid that is, the the reason you die from opioids, like opioid o- overdoses, you stop breathing. I mean, morphine, opium, all of those products depress your respiration. And if if you stop breathing long enough, you aren't gonna be able to be brought back. And I and I I think the idea of somebody saying, well, now we need to check to see whether this person opted in or opted out. Administer the bloody drug. We can fight over the legal aspects of it later, but I don't think you leave someone on the floor and don't
Yeah.
and and don't immediately revive them. Is 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 anybody think I'm?
No, no.
No, can we just remove that? Can we?
I'm gonna have to have a conversation with our council, I think.
Please.
Yeah, it's a legal question, right? Because then we also have a a duty to protect students, right? And that are liable for negligence if we don't, um you know, and that would be, and we also have this other doctrine of in local parentis, saying that basically when parents aren't here, we are the parents, and we should make the decisions in their stead, so.
Well, it's sort of the same thing, like if they're joking. We opt out of not getting behind anything, but I mean, it's sort of like, it's it's kind of the same thing.
I I mean, it really, I mean, I I just, I cannot imagine an instance in which a parent would opt out from this thing, but if they did, I don't know how we're supposed to deal with it. And I and I think we have to make, we have to make the assumption that that the trial needs to be revived. Period. I mean, I, I mean, I
We can just.
I'm not trying to denigrate someone's right to to assert something. I'm just trying to say that puts us in an impossible situation. Um.
Ask if we could just remove that.
Well, I I will have a conversation, Mark and I will have a conversation with council, will understand precisely why it's in here and what we can do about it, and how we're supposed to administer a program where somebody opts out. And and we have to sit there and look for that. Meanwhile, the person's time is expiring on this, or I don't, I I just, that's a terrible situation.
You only have five minutes.
You know, well, I don't know how long you have, but it's not a long time, right? Depends on how, and you don't know how you don't know how long they've been in respiratory arrest when they arrive. So I I don't think you, you know, you can't say, well, we've got five minutes. You you might have, you might have ten seconds left before you have brain damage or a- and then maybe death. I it's mind-boggling. We have to figure that one out. We we've got to get that right a hundred percent. Okay, um uh so this action item that's on here is actually not.
Could I ask one more question about policies before it comes up for the second time around? And and this is concerning the um discipline uh restricting a student from uh what would it be, recess or is it, is it uh physical ed classes as well?
You you can't, there's a limitation on the punishment you can use with respect to taking away participation in those classes. You can't take them both. If there's two classes, you can't take both classes.
It seems like there's a lot of if, and then, and then if it doesn't meet this condition, it seems like there's an awful lot of um discretion. And is it the teacher who actually decides, or the administrator, school principal? Um there's a lot going on here that is and what are the terms now?
Well, the terms, the terms now, I, but hold on a second, let me find this policy. Well, this applies to school employees. So that's everybody, teachers, substitutes, administrators, the superintendent, guidance counselors, everybody down uh in here, nurses, physicians.
It seems like it spells out X amount of times per week and who's gonna monitor all this? Anyway.
Well, I mean, I think we do, they they probably do monitor, but this is gonna be an exceptional circumstance for this is when this is brought in. This is not, this is not something that happens frequently. And and here you've got a situation which um if if the person presents a danger, then you can always suspend.
So it would have to be a pretty se- severe incident, I would think so.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I I I don't, this is not a a normal, everyday protocol.
I think it's less about like day-to-day monitoring, as much as it's educating the staff, that, you know, you shouldn't use this as a go-to solution and then like problematic some behavior. Um if need be, there's certain circumstances that rise for it, but then uh it's educating folks rather than trying to you know, go through every single day and ask a question whether, you know, hundreds of kids have been denied recessed, that would be insane.
Yeah, and I think that's exactly.
I think that they want to bring uh bring up the fact that this is maybe not the right thing to use is discipline. That taking away that time might be counterproductive.
Well, I I I think the idea is, is it's trying to put a limit on 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 the new C N S, isn't that what this is? It's trying to put, it's suggesting, as Mark says, that this isn't necessarily the go-to method. It doesn't mean you can't, if you have to. Uh but it but it does, it's trying to say, don't make this your go-to method.
Yeah, one subtle but important change also is that um it's barring I E P teams from, which means they say that as a nine, here five or four, that they can deny child, it's a flag to be, it's more inclusive in scope than in.
Yeah, anything else? On any other questions, John, on policies? Okay, so I wanna move on to G, action items. Um this was on for an action item, but it needs to go to finance and operations first to come back with their recommendation. So it's slightly premature. Uh and so I think what we're gonna do is just simply refer it to finance and operations for their, their looks in. And then they'll come back to us with a recommendation. Uh and and I'm certain their recommendations would be to accept the audit, because it's a clean audit, so. I'm sure that's what we'll get. Okay. Unless there's anything else to come before this meeting. Um I would declare us adjourned by consent at eight, at seven fifty two. Everyone be safe in.